I know, I know.
Well, you're bigger than me, so.
Is it?
Okay.
See this shit?
Hey, if I can remind everybody really quickly, please. Remind everybody, the microphones are live right now. We are officially live streaming, so people can watch this in real time, or they can go home and pull it up on our YouTube page at another time to watch it. But anything you say can get picked up by the mics in the back and the mics here, so just keep that in mind. Can I ask everybody to stand, please, and face the flag for the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, welcome, everybody, to the to the official Village of Cornwall and Hudson Business Meeting for the month of October, and it is officially October 16, 2023. And so I'm gonna make a motion to open the meeting. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, all right, we got a lot of stuff on the calendar tonight. Um, and we are going to start um, with a presentation by Mr. Christopher Paul Meyer of the Veteran Repertory Theater Group Company. How do we? Oh, we gotta do, okay, all right, I stand corrected. Chris, you're gonna have to wait a second. There is public comment first. There'll be two opportunities for public comment tonight. At the top of the meeting now, you can speak about any agenda item or anything. And then there'll also be an opportunity at the end of the meeting. We ask that you keep it to three minutes. I don't normally watch the clock as long as you're advancing the ball and not using any pejoratives or ad hominins. We will allow you to speak around three minutes. So does anybody from the public wish to speak now? Sir, Mr. Land. No, you gotta step up now. We got a formal process now. We're very fancy here in the village. Um, so just step up and for the clerks' purposes, will you just state your name and your address?
Sure, Doug Land, 60 Deer Hill Road. Uh, hi, everybody. I know some of you. I don't really know you, but it's nice to meet you and Dave, nice. Just asking, the franchise agreements were on the agenda, and I'm just interested to know what the status of those is. It's kind of this issue I have with the wires that just keep on proliferating here in town. And when we moved in, there was one little wire that was the electric wire and one even smaller wire, which was, we believe it or not, we had a party line up on the top of the mountain when I moved in. Today, there's five giant, you know, from, and just what's the status of the franchise agreement? Is there anything we can do? So that they don't just, because my understanding is when they decide to put a new service in, they just put a new wire and they don't take out the old ones. There's no limit on how fat they can be. There's no, and I did send to the clerk. I don't know if, uh,
We got it.
And, like, again, there's five different transformers on the wires in addition to just the wires themselves. If you go, last comment is if, like, you go just a little bit outside of town, you can see some of them now, some of those poles have eight, nine, 10 wires on them. Is there any limit? Is there anything you can do with the franchise agreement? I have no idea how you negotiate a franchise agreement. I have no idea what the legal opportunities are, but I just wanted to make sure it was something you were thinking about.
I could tell you this, like,
Before I turn it to Jim, because um, I tried to read through the franchise agreement. My eyes glazed over and I took a sharp stick and plugged it right in. Jim actually quietly an hour ago came back and went through it. He's done these a number of times. We sign him every year, but to your point, he's gone through it, and to your point, we're gonna discuss that, but I'm gonna let him talk.
I just wanted to raise it. I thank you for your consideration.
Long story short is, you're not the only one who's complained about it. And in fact, right next to me, there's a wire that's spooled up. It's hanging down from from the telephone pole. That one hasn't been for years. That's been for a couple of months. So it's, one, it's, it's annoying. Two, the franchise agreement, and I have to talk to council about it, but in looking at it, there are some provisions in regards to maintenance of the cable system. Um, and then there's, um, you have to give them notice. I'm just giving you the, the macro level. You have to provide notice of a violation to them pursuant to the, pursuant to the agreement, which these are standard agreement franchise agreements with all the different franchise, franchisees. So notice a violation, then what you have to do is the village has to then has, have to have a meeting with them and go over what the violation is. They then have the opportunity to cure. So the other thing is too, is this, is what you're getting to, which is what I want, is to have some provision in, in here whereby that they have to, you know, that they have to remove an old line or identify and remove it. The bottom line is, in order to do this, it actually has to be approved by both sides and the PSC. That's one of the big things. So it's gotta go to the PSC, which is gonna take some time. You can, there's enough language, at least in one of them, in the charter franchise agreement, where you can read in the, where you can read in, hey, maintenance means taking an old line out.
Clean it up.
And clean it up. The Verizon one I've looked at doesn't have the same provision that the charter, that the charter one has, which is Charter Spectrum. So the long story short is, yes, um, we're gonna try to do this. It's a 15-year agreement. I don't know when our agreement is up right now. I know they gave this to us months ago. Do you have any idea, Joe?
I just, I don't.
But I would think that that would be the time when it has to be renewed.
No, absolutely. I think the, I think actually, there's two parts to this, Doug, though. It's, that's the easy part to me. The hard part is the practical, and that is identifying whose line is what, who owns what line. And that, that's the problem. Then, and part of that is actually, who's going to do that? It's like, okay, our code enforcement officer already is involved in everything else. And then, I mean, you have to have Dave. It's just the practical application. I'm not saying we're not gonna do it. I wanna do it. I just think the hardest part of this whole problem is, is the actual identification of whose line it is. Have him do it.
Add one thing. I actually talked to one of the line maintenance people.
Yeah.
It's not their problem. You know, they're, they get a written order from Albany or from the regional office. They could care less. If they got an order that said, put a 10-foot round cable, they would just do it. It's not, it's not the local guy. This is gonna need to be a little bit more aggressive. And I don't know if we could pass a local law saying they have to. Again, I don't know what it is, but I would, I'm just raising the issue. I don't have any answer. I just wanted to make it something where.
We'll work through it. We'll work through it. I just, I think even with a local law, again, it comes down to who's gonna identify what, who owns it, and that's gonna take, that's what's gonna take the time. But I get you. We'll work on that.
And are we sure that these are fif, every 15 years?
It's a 15-year franchise agreement.
But I thought we did this last year and the year before. Did we?
No, what we started talking about, this one was last year.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think one of the problems is, is like Doug said, what happened in the past was when Verizon came through prior to Fios being mostly underground, uh, the service wires, uh, were connected, and then you switched to Spectrum, they hung them and left them. They would coil them, or they would leave them hooked up because they don't care. And that's the problem. That's why you have so many. Especially down in town. In town, it's absolutely ridiculous.
And that's what I'm afraid that the village is gonna end up looking like it does on Main Street.
Yeah.
And again, and it's gonna get worse unless you.
Now, Doris, is this a placeholder that every year, because we discussed this at length last year in regards to building in some kind of language restricting them from putting it in without removing the old. But to Jim's point, how do we do this? What, what are we allowed to do? If we stop our feet and say, we're not signing this?
No, I think, I think what you're recalling is we adopted a local law concerning tele, broken telephone poles. And part of the problem with the poles was that the carriers all have to take their items off the pole before the old pole can be removed. So telephone poles, okay, that's one thing.
Pretty good job with that.
Yeah.
The.
I read that. That was actually really good. The zombie pole thing is good.
Yeah.
The zombie pole, right. This, this is a different issue. I think that, I think that's what you're probably.
Yeah, okay.
Just put it on the, think about it. If you want me to chat about it, I'm happy to come in.
We all agree about it.
And to Jim's point, you're not the only person, Doug. We've gotten a lot of people that said exactly the same things, and it's, it's infuriating, frustrating, but we won't let it go.
Get there.
Thank you.
Okay, um, anybody else from the public wish to speak? There'll be another opportunity at the end of the meeting. Okay, seeing no one else, I'm gonna go ahead and close public comment. And I'm gonna ask Mr. uh, Mr. Meyer to come up and give the board a short five-to-10-minute briefing on what he is proposing in regard to the Savage Wonder Festival and it being on village property. Sir?
Yes. No, thank you. Thanks, Jim. Thanks a lot, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Everybody, uh, for allowing me to speak, especially because I got a psycho eight-year-old over on the grass there, the swinging a broomstick around, so the sooner I can be done with this and get him home, that'll probably be good.
Be in your sightline right now.
Not really, and it's a little, it's a little nerve-wracking, but I'm, I'm gonna deal with it. So, let me tell you all about the, uh, the Savage Wonder Festival. Uh, the full name is Savage Wonder Festival of Veterans in the Arts. So, this festival came about relatively early in the development of Veterans Repertory Theater. It happened, I'll, I'll kinda give you a 30,000-foot view of it. It happened very organically. As we were meeting more and more veterans in the arts, we started to encounter more and more veterans in other artistic media. And what stood out to me was two things. One, the ubiquity of all the really interesting military experiences they'd had, and then the wild success that they'd had artistically. These were not hobbyists. It was not veteran macaroni art, as some people sometimes talk about it when you do art therapy stuff. These were people that were signed to record contracts, had book deals, had won awards, and were doing really interesting things. And I was like, I think this aligns with our mission of bringing more veterans into the cultural space. And so when we, when I started to meet folks like an Iraq War veteran that was a protege of Placido Domingo and has been touring the world as an opera singer, a former Navy corpsman that was shot up as part of a Green on Blue attack in Afghanistan where the Afghans turned their guns on him, and yet had become this outlaw country singer and had put out two records. A, a guy who was a Navy veteran for a couple of years in the 80s, and had then crested with the hip-hop wave in the early 90s, gotten hooked on drugs, become homeless, was living in burned-out buildings in Harlem, got into the VA system, found art therapy, and became a national award-winning collage artist. Now, there's a studio out in Newburgh and is doing really, really well with it. A Marine from Fallujah, a machine gunner in Fallujah who, of course, started a modern dance company. Right? That old cliche. So, I mean, you found people like this, and it was like, these are stories that are riveting, and the talent and the wide diversity of their artistic media is really compelling. And I was like, I think there's a, there's room here to do a multimedia festival, not just music, but multimedia, and really bring something cool together. So, in 2022, on Memorial Day weekend, we launched the festival out at Sugarloaf. Little psychotic, we put it together in about three months, which we'll never do again. But what was great about it is that we did partner with the Sugarloaf Spring Festival. We brought about 4,000 to 5,000 people to Sugarloaf on that day alone. The audience, as we hoped, was largely civilian because it's not a festival for veterans. It's not a veteran job fair. It's not a veteran resource fair. It's for a discerning civilian audience. And everything about it was great. Except that it was our first run, so things can always get better. And it was the kind of thing where we knew it needed to be sustainable, and we weren't sure if it was sustainable in the long term at Sugarloaf. We had a lot of stuff going on, so we didn't do it this year, but we did want to bring it back next year on Columbus Day weekend for one day, on that Saturday of that weekend in 2024. When we looked at how we would do that and where we needed to do that, the obvious answer was to bring it home. Since we all live in Cornwall, VetRep is in Cornwall, we wanted to find a space here that made sense. When we looked around, the space that made the most sense was the Donahue Farm. How we wanted to program this festival was a little bit different than the two stages we ran at Sugarloaf. We wanted to have a three-stage setup because the programming is gonna be basically four components. One will be an adapted Shakespearean play. That's because we have a Green Beret and a Navy SEAL who we know, who both have spent the bulk of their post-military careers working as classically trained actors doing Shakespearean classical theater all around the country. And I just think that'd be a really cool opportunity to bring them here and do something like that. We also are gonna have poetry with our veteran poets who, again, these are national award-winning poets who have written books, are signed to book deals. But the way we do poetry is a little bit different than just some poetry slam. We do it as a dueling poetry setup, and we bring in live painting and live music. So it's this multimedia kind of event. Then, of course, we'll have bands, and we will also have stand-up comedy in this one. We're talking right now with some very high-profile people. I can't say who it is because nothing's signed yet. Trust me, the second I can brag about it, I will be happy to scream it from the rooftops, and we will. But we're bringing in people that regularly sell out very high-profile venues. So, um, those are the people we're in conversations with. All of that is a little bit of a change to our programming. So the way we saw of doing this at Donahue Farm was to do a three-stage setup essentially in the form of a C. So one on the top, one on the bottom, one on the side, um, and have three stages. And that way, we could alternate between them with very little crossover and keep an audience of 3,000 to 5,000 in that C, in the whole of the C. Our plan with this is to make this our fundraiser every year to cover our operating budget in a way that's much better and much more of an effective give-back than a black tie gala in the city or something like that. This is something we think is much more organic to us, is much more of a value to our home and to everyone that lives here. And since we do see that the upside of Cornwall, the reason we built VetRep here is because we do see ourselves at the crossroads of West Point and Storm King. We have a world-class military and veteran community. We have a world-class arts community. We like to be at that intersection. So this is something we hope is a rinseable and repeatable event that we can do year in, year out. This area is known for a lot of things. I don't think it would be terrible if we were also known for this, because we do think we're building a bit of a Mecca for veterans in the arts. And, um, it's not the worst thing, I think, to build here. Happy to answer. Any questions? Have any discussion we wanna have?
Sure. Chris, thanks. And, um, first of all, on last Friday, Chris and I took a walk down to the Donahue Farm property to just kinda scope it out and try to get a sense of, you know, whether or not this would work. Obviously, there's been some recommendations for other places for this. I need Chris to show me what he envisioned because there's a lot of things that have to happen. And I know there's gonna be some questions on these, but I'll go through them real quick.
Sure.
Firstly, Scenic Hudson. Obviously, Scenic Hudson has a conservation easement at the farm property. And literally today, um, we got a letter from them. They've been reaching out. Trusty Brain has a relationship with them as far as being our liaison to the, to the Donahue Farm property, which, you know, is 47 acres and falls under a conservation easement, um, where a trailhead is and certain things we can do and can't do. So they sent a letter which you, we, unfortunately, were only able to give it to you right before the meeting started. But when I first read the letter, I, my, my, I started to think this did not look good. And then when I got to the end of the letter, understood their concerns are 3,000 to 5,000 people.
Sure.
And damage, potential damage to a, a, you know, a landscape out there that we all value and treasure. And I know that, that, the whole point of this is doing out there with the backdrop and all of that. They have requested that you and Trusty Brain, I, um, take a walk down there with them so that you can show them. I think some of their concerns as articulated in the letter can be mitigated, and I think others, they're gonna need you to explain how this has worked before.
Absolutely.
Number two, um, 3,000 to 5,000 people. Now, I went back and looked in the archives, and during some of the 4th of July celebrations, we were a much smaller community back then. But during some of our 4th of July celebrations, they had 5,000 to 8,000 people there. Now, that was back, Dave, in the 60s before we moved uptown, correct?
Yes.
When we used to do it down there.
Up to 76.
Up to 1976. So we held it down there. Um, now, obviously, there wasn't a conservation easement at the time, because I don't know if they'd be happy about fireworks there. But the biggest issues were ingress, egress, transportation. The board is gonna wanna plan. Scenic Hudson is gonna wanna plan. I think one of their biggest issues is any disturbing of the folks that may not be inclined to stop by the festival, maybe they will be, but are coming there to hike. And they park at the trailhead, they get out, they walk, and they go up on the mountain, and whether or not that would be impeded. Ingress and egress, that's a tough one because, and I know you have a transportation plan that the board is probably gonna wanna scrutinize before they give their final approval on this. How are you gonna do that? And obviously, we do, um, very successfully, as Win Gold always says, he invites about, uh, you know, 6,000 to 8,000 of his closest friends down to Riverfest every year. He's been doing it since 1998. Understanding that Donahue Memorial Park is different, understanding that ingress and egress is different, and, and the nature of the landscape bit differently. But having a plan like, like Riverfest does, where you have bus stops in the town and in the village, and people can park in the municipal lot, park at the bandstand, park at Town Hall, park at the Old De Chico's, you know, park down by our restaurants in the lower village, and then take a bus down there. Security issues, and that's gonna be something, obviously, um, you know, in light of where we are in the world right now, anytime you put together a large gathering like this, now granted, it's, you know, it's, it's vets, which doesn't, is not as much of an attractive target, but anytime you put together a soft target where, you know, screening, how do you do that? How do you, what happens if people get unruly? You're gonna have to have, you know, I know you talked about possibly using some private security folks. You're gonna have to coordinate that with the chief. The chief's gonna have to coordinate that with all his local colleagues and in the state police and Orange County Sheriff's Office and other things. So I'll say this, what I asked the board to do tonight, after they asked their questions, is to, a straw poll. So that when you leave here tonight, we're not gonna pass a resolution. As you know, there's work to be done, and Scenic Hudson is a big piece of this. We don't, we don't go anywhere without them going, okay, that makes sense, and we'll need your plan. Is to take a straw poll, so you go, okay, the board's working the direction on getting this approved. We would approve this or disapprove this. We'd disapprove it in, uh, in November, at, at the November board meeting. So that gives you some time, and I know you've already got a, a project plan put together, but we'll need that. We'll need to set a walkthrough down there, and there may be board members that wanna be a part of that too, to see how this can work. So those are the things that jump out at me. I know we've talked about them.
Yep.
I'm generally in favor of the project. I think keeping it home is a wonderful thing. Being a veterans thing is wonderful. And to your point, introducing the civilian populace to what veterans are doing with, with two things that don't seem to be, you know, they seem to be incongruous, that makes perfect sense. But these things have to be answered. And with that,
Yep.
I'll start with Jim Kane and.
I, I support it 100% for the same reasons that Jim just outlined. Plus, I went to your first Savage Wonder Festival, and, uh, it was well-run and well-organized. I know you only did it in three months, but, um, I thought it was excellent. So I'd love to see you come here and, and our community support you guys.
Thanks, man. Thanks, Jim.
Dave, um, I'm in, I'm basically in favor of it. Uh, I think, uh, a couple of things you have going for you. Traffic-wise is the idea that 218 will obviously probably not for sure be open by then, which will create a traffic loop for you. You know, I have just basic concerns everyone else has, but, uh, I mean, I'd love to see you come to Cornwall. I mean, if it's manageable.
Thanks.
William.
I agree with Dave. The, uh, it sounds great. Uh, I had heard glowing reviews of the Sugarloaf event that you did. And, uh, and also I know your other, um, initiative in town, the, the theater that you've got, the 16th Seat Theater. I guess it, for me, goes to the intensity of the use, you know. So having been involved with the Donahue Farm Planning Committee for a while, the, there has been a very low but persistent undercurrent of restoring the fireworks display. And I've been against it because it doesn't seem in keeping with the current conservation easement, and it doesn't seem in keeping with the current use and nature of the property. And so my concerns relate to crowd size primarily. That's the biggest thing. The, um, I do have a question about the special security. We do, we do, as, as, uh, Trusty Palliata pointed out in one conversation, or might have been on an email, but that we, you know, Rings Pond, for the 4th of July, we do 10,000 people or whatever the number is. Do you, you have a number on that?
Yeah, between 10 and 12, depending on whether or not it falls on the weekend or not.
Sure. And that, to my knowledge, is, is managed from a security standpoint, bar local police officers supplemented, perhaps, you know, town and village together. Maybe there's a few extra part-timers, and I just would wanna understand why there's need for additional private security, if, if there is.
I'm, I'm, I'm happy to be talked out of it. I mean, trust me, I don't, I'm not dying to spend the money on it if I don't need to, yeah. So, um, it was mostly, I think, most we've ever said about is just that's what we did at Sugarloaf, because they wanted to plus up, that we had Orange County Sheriff there. We had all the local folks, uh, you know, from Chester and all that, and Sugarloaf itself there. So, um, they wanted liaisons and they wanted extra bodies there, so we did that. So I, I think mostly we was just saying, we have the capability of bringing them on, but I'm more than open to whatever you all are comfortable with, whatever the chief is comfortable with. Fine, you know, not wedded to it.
Also, Chris and I talked about this down at the farm the other day. There's also a distinction between armed private security and people with security shirts on. They're there to, you know, and, and they're not necessarily armed. They're there to, Chris, do you do any type of bag screening? Do you do any type of, you know, somebody has a couple too many cocktails and, and they start, you know, a profanity laced tirade in front of some kids? How do you, how do you handle that?
So, so that's primarily why we had Blue Eagle there. Um, Blue Eagle's former NYPD guys. They work at City Winery. They do all, a lot of big events around here. They're, they're very well-integrated with the, the Leo community around here and, and Orange County Sheriff. The reason we had them was for those, um, incidents that fall below the scope of law enforcement proper. So bag searches. Things like if somebody became unruly, we had Beer Gardens, so we kind of had a confined space where alcohol consumption happened, so they could kind of just keep an eye on that and then not waste law enforcement's time with stuff they didn't need to worry about unless it escalated. So they were kind of there as observer reporters, um, and just kind of a first line of detection. So that would be a way that I would see using them. That is, in my view, the primary reason, if we were to have them, that's the primary reason we would have them. The way we see it with the buses looping, uh, it might be something where a Blue Eagle person's on each bus, so there's some initial vetting of people that get on the bus. And there, and therefore, we're not wasting, we're not having long lines on the property. But it's something where it's a force multiplier to ease the traffic flow, so we're not holding people up or congesting things. That's where I would see the value if we went in that direction. Again, if it's something, so it's, it's there to be a force multiplier to law enforcement, more than an extra layer of, you know, security or response, you know, protocols.
At Sugarloaf, you didn't have single-point entry either. There's obviously no way at Donahue Farm property to have single-point entry, which is what we do in schools now, is a security precaution that one way in, one way out, except for emergency exits and things like that, to prevent somebody coming from a back door or to prevent somebody, you know, stumbling off the mountain or whatever.
We, we did use Blue Eagle to rope off the entire area, and they did have, uh, rear-side security. So we did actually have, we had fidelity on who was getting in. We had three points of entry, and they were all monitored. So that setup could work at Donahue Farm. Again, we're very flexible as to what the actual mechanics, the X's and O's of this look like. I think, um, having some capability to bag screen, to weed out anybody that's obviously intoxicated that's about to enter the event or is causing a disruptance that we could get ahead of the curve on, um, I think would probably be wise. But, um, but we're pretty flexible on what that looks like and how we wanna address that.
For profit or not for profit?
The event?
Yeah.
Oh, I mean, the event's all for our nonprofit. What we see this as is really a fundraiser for us.
What do you charge to enter?
Depends who the acts are that we get. If we get the acts that we're talking to, it'll be 100 bucks a per, person easily.
And 100 bucks a head, you're gonna draw 3,000 to 5,000 people?
When we're able to announce who it is that we're bringing, yes. Right now, uh, if Rob Schneider can get 88 bucks to do Sugarloaf pack and can sell out eight months in advance, the people we're bringing will do really well. Yeah, in November. But back in March, he was already two-thirds sold out at 88 bucks a pop. If Rob Schneider's doing that, the people that we're bringing, because it's not just one person, if we get them all, it will be, um, an aggregate of some big names.
Vendors, food, beverages, and adult beverages. Obviously, a concern that we're gonna get from the public is, you know, people getting sauced up and fights breaking out or things like that. So what do you have in a way that? Do you have outside vendors that you invite? You charge them a fee to be there?
Yeah. The, the way, so the way this worked last time is we had veteran-owned breweries, cideries, um, and then Dana Distributor kind of was the safety net to make sure we had just enough around there so everybody could get a drink if they wanted one. The way Blue Eagle recommended we did it at Sugarloaf is we did use Beer Gardens, so we had a confined space to watch. So you're not trying to identify a needle in a haystack, but you have just one easy area to monitor and see if there's bad. They could only drink in that one area. Now, so that could easily be something that we.
Tented area? Was it tented?
No, it was open, so we could see it.
What happens? Oh, well, I didn't even, what about bad weather?
Yeah, so bad weather, um, this will be a rain-or-shine event, no matter what. We, there is gonna be some tented areas because we're gonna have a visual art display that'll need to be inside, and that probably means we'll just be putting up a tent for them. Uh, most of it will not be tented. Most of it will be outside.
And Chris, what you're, so that the, the folks here can understand, you're talking about putting three main stages on the, on the back end of the mowed area. So if you're standing on Bayview and you're looking at the Donahue Farm property and the, and the the barn is in front of you, to the other side of that, where we do the movies, where we did movies at the farm, that mowed area, which is the only one we mow, other than the rotations and whatever the rules are as far as that, but that area right there is where you would put three stages.
It would be a C. It would be in a C formation, so you have two on the sides, one on the back. That's how we see, envision doing that.
If you did tents, you would look to do those, because one of the questions Scenic Hudson is gonna have is, is it outside the building envelope? So the building envelope is where the barn is, the ice house is, that area.
And it would be in the area that you and I looked at that's adjacent, directly adjacent to the ice house. So that's where the tent could be. Again, there's multiple locations it could be. Yeah. So, um, that could be. Yeah, so, um, that could be, easily be a place that we erect something.
Okay.
Yeah.
Bill, anymore?
Uh, why not Rings Pond or Donahue Park, where we've done large-scale events, uh, you know, Riverfest keeps being raised, it's like, oh, we'll do it like Riverfest, it's like, why not do it a lot like Riverfest?
Great question, so, I mean, obviously, yeah, I mean, I mean, the, the park is gorgeous, and obviously it makes a lot of sense for a lot of reasons, the problem though is the size. So there's no dedicated performance space of the volume that we would need. The, the park is just not wide enough, it's great for a Riverfest where it's a walking festival and you traverse the river. To actually have one sedentary place where you're gonna sit and shows are gonna be performed, there's just not enough space there. There's two other reasons too, one that's worth mentioning is, um, a bunch of the musicians that we've been talking to actually specifically asked if there was water nearby because of the damage it does to their equipment and to the voices. Um, and with the weather, and I know when we've tabled at Riverfest, the wind can pick up a lot, which is fine for a vendor mart, little bit different for a performance space, especially with some of the folks we're talking to. The other real killer for us down there is the train, that we have no control over that. And when we're doing poetry, Shakespeare, stand-up comedy, that just, that's a killer. So those, that makes it a little bit not ideal for an outdoor performance space.
Good answer. Any thoughts on the, on the Rings Pond part?
Yeah, I mean, I, I mean, again, it, it, it comes down to space, it comes down to what's the dedicated space that we can use. If we're bringing in some of the acts, uh, uh, I don't wanna over-promise and under-deliver, but it's just based on the folks that we are trying to get and bring in here, and that we have some fidelity that we could get. Um, to do them at the band shell that's there, at the little bandstand, I, that's, that's just not gonna work. Um, there's not visibility, there's no platform there, you can't see them, um, and it's just gonna be a little difficult to pull off. Um, especially if we're asking people to, um, hang out for a little bit, because we have multiple stages around them. It's just a matter of finding what, what's a space, it's, it's nice having the, the audience in one confined space and having three stages that we just kind of are, are getting at them from. But yeah, I'm, I, we were definitely, I'm happy to have my mind blown with any other options, it's just when we've looked at it, we were like, yeah, I don't, I don't think anything else is gonna make sense the way this does.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, of course.
You're the closer.
Um, first of all, I saw your son's head, so he's okay.
He's still there.
See, that's a mother, that is a true mother right there.
He's okay, I'm mostly worried for anybody walking by, but I'm sure he's all right, but yeah, thank you, though, yeah.
Um, I'm also very excited, um, about the, um, the idea of this coming to our village, I think it's great. Um, there were some things I'm super happy about, there's no smoking.
Right.
Right, anywhere on the, anywhere in the vicinity, there's no smoking.
I, I'm, let me put, the, the glib answer is, whatever you all want, I, I'm agnostic on it, I'm like, I don't know enough about vaping, so I, the big thing for us with the smoking was two things. One, I, I, I don't, I'm not up on my drug laws, so I don't know where marijuana stands and all that. The other was, of course, the littering and the environmental hazard, not to mention the air pollution and all that. And then, of course, the fire hazard that could erupt, so there's, there's a bunch of things where I was like, smoking's just easier to get rid of that altogether. I don't know enough about vaping, to be perfectly honest, I'm not one of the cool kids, so I'm happy to be guided on that, whatever you all like.
Cigarettes and marijuana are treated the same unfortunately, in the sense that anywhere you can smoke a cigarette, you can also smoke weed.
Okay.
This is a park, and I don't know if we have a, 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 because we ran into this at Donahue Memorial Park. Restrict it from the, I mean, we could.
Oh, I see, I see, yeah, I just, I, I don't know about you, I, we were like, we don't wanna be part of the cleanup crew that's having to pick up eight thousand cigarette butts at the end, I was like, if we can just get rid of it all together.
But I mean, we could also, if this was to be allowed, we could also, as a board, say, to do this, to make a deal with us on this, there would be no combustion tobacco, there would be no vaping, there would be no anything.
Sure, sure, yeah, I'm, I'm happy to do whatever everybody wants with vaping, I'm not wedded to any position when it comes to vaping.
And what, what's the, what's the age range, so you've done this twice at Sugarloaf, what's the age range? Do you have young kids, do you have seniors, do you have everything in between?
Yeah, I mean, our, our demographic generally was late thirties, early forties and couples, um, that's what we were seeing a lot of. Uh, I think a big thing is, um, we did have some metal bands and some punk bands, but it's a very collaborative environment, it's not a rowdy environment. Um, and Jim can probably speak to this, uh, you know, well as a impartial third party, but, um, it was, uh, Pete, you know, former First Sergeant, you know, who came, he says, the first veteran event I've ever been at, where there's no competition. It's just a collaborative environment, and that's the, we really try to foster that, that is truly, um, a decaffeinated artistic journey. It's not, um, it's not guys popping out of rice paddies, and it's not an aggro, you know, Five Finger Death Punch kind of concert. So it's something where, where we really are trying to strike, um, a very artistic pose with really talented folks. So I say all that to say, um, yeah, we don't anticipate huge issues with that.
Anything else?
Yes.
Yeah.
Um, well, just on that, our children also, um, charge the hundred dollar.
Um, so the short answer is, we don't, we, we wanted this event initially, last year we ran, or two years ago, we ran this event, no, last year. Last year we ran this event as a thirteen-and-over, probably this year it would be an eighteen-and-over, um, because the poetry does hit hard. Um, and it's not that it's like blood and guts, it's just, you know, there's stories about unrequited love and innocence lost and, you know, things like that, and for them to be able to speak without censoring themselves is like, needs to be eighteen-and-over, so that's what we're going for with that. Um, again, yeah.
That will be another argument, and I'm just saying this, as we play devil's advocate, the other argument is, you know, we were gonna show a, a, a movie, movies on the Hudson down at the farm property for Oktoberfest, the Special Events Committee. The movie was old school, and old school is, you know, a, a rated R movie, and it was rated R for mostly profanity and some suggestive language and that stuff, there were people that were upset about having that at the park.
Sure, yeah, I mean, uh, I, I don't have a comeback for that, I know when it comes to stand-up comedy, I mean, it, it's an adult event, I mean, they're gonna be, um, we've got one guy who we're talking to, Mike Eschak, he's a, he's a Yemeni Muslim, he calls us the Muslim Marine. And he was a Marine, but he's from, uh, he got a Yemeni background from Dearborn, Michigan, and he comes in and he's hilarious. It's marine humor, you know, uh,
All right.
So it's, but I think that's part of it, is that we're, this is part of the cross-cultural experience that we're trying to provide, is that this is gonna, it's gonna hit a little bit differently, but it's not, it's not pornographic, it's not out of control, it's just, yeah, it's eighteen-and-over, you probably have the bandwidth to process it, probably under that's a little much.
What else, Laura?
Um, we'll be sure to kind of, um, be careful with the gardens that are there.
Yes.
I mean, those will be like, far off in some way.
Absolutely, so I, I talked about this with the mayor, um, I'm open to pretty much anything to keep the garden inoculated from all the rest of it, if that means putting a stage in front of the garden, so it's out of the flow of traffic, if it means shifting our stages so that the garden is pristine and can be isolated away from the stages, and we just put the stages in the other, we shift the sea in another direction, um, I'm open to whatever, because I, I agree, and it's right there, and it, I think that's a, a pretty good bellwether, if that gets dinged, that it's too much, so we wanna make sure that that's, stays intact.
And the, the only other thing I was thinking about was the entry.
Yes.
Um, is there, how, how, how does that look? So is there's not huge lines waiting, I mean, if there's a lot of people cycling in?
It's a great question, so, uh, uh, and what, what we've looked at so far is trying to do all of our screening and all of our ticketing on the bus. So as the buses pick up, we have a rider who's processing everyone, so when the bus pulls up, it's literally a drop-off point, and people can flow right in, there will be a checkpoint, just because some people will be walking, so we'll make sure that we vet them and just have some fidelity on who that is. But generally speaking, we're gonna try to do most of that legwork on the buses when it's small scale and nobody's being held up or inconvenienced, because it's all preliminary to getting there, and we're not backing up traffic, and we're not having long lines or anything crazy like that.
Uh, at, uh, Sugarloaf, did you use like QR codes in Apple Pay and things like that?
Well, we didn't, so at Sugarloaf, what was different is we had three different entry points, and we also had access to their parking lot. So everyone that came initially, the big rush of people, filled up the parking lot, and that made the processing very, very easy. Uh, then by the time our buses started coming in from the remote locations, um, it kind of flowed relatively seamlessly, but that's the advantage with three entry points, um, and kind of a staggered, uh, bus route. Um, obviously, we're gonna try to stagger these buses as much as possible, but there's one entry point, so we don't want it to get flooded, and I think the more manageable thing is to hit them at the lily pads, hit them before they get on the bus or while they're on the bus, so we're just easing that traffic flow.
Uh, one, the, when you mentioned cleaning,
Yeah.
Um, what does that look like?
Yeah, I mean, we, we, we clean it up, I mean, we have to clean up after, we have to, and, and we're happy to talk about what resources the village has or would like to use, um, but, yeah, I mean, we try to leave the place better than we found it, and we wanna pick up after ourselves. That's also why we try to limit the work we have to do upfront and make sure we limit the trash.
Volunteers, do you hire a cleaning team, because you know, we have the, we have the national parks policy, which is, when you leave it, you leave it in a better condition than you found it, if this is to get approved.
Yeah, I mean, this is, a, a lot of this falls on our volunteers, that's what we did last year with the Sugarloaf staff.
How many volunteers did you have, ballpark?
Forty.
Okay.
Forty, but we also have people circulating throughout the day, it's not, we don't wait till ten o'clock at night to start picking things up. Um, it's something that's going on consistently, we constantly have people on rotation.
Okay, so let me ask you this, then, the amount of trash generated by this amount and number of people is going to be voluminous, it's gonna be insane. So that's gonna require extra DPW hands here to be on duty for that. Would the event be willing to pay overtime for our guys that would have to come in to handle that?
Yeah, I mean, just like we did with Sugarloaf, I mean, we're willing to sit down and talk about what makes sense. I, I, there's definitely the, all the overtime stuff, we know that the budgets come into play and all that, so yeah, that's absolutely part of the conversation.
Okay, all right, Chris, um, with that, I'm gonna say thank you.
Sure.
Um, I think generally speaking, is the board in a position right now, without, you know, requiring anybody to vote, that we will take your project plan, which we would like to see, um, and then, um, my vote, yes, would be contingent on taking a look at the project plan, making sure that it works out, and all those things that have been brought up here, and that Senior Hudson blesses off after they see the project plan and walk the area with us, is that fair?
Yeah.
Anybody see it differently?
Um, have you, I know you, I think I saw in an email that you mentioned you had spoken to Deke about this, are you in touch with the Donahue Committee at all? Uh, there's a formal committee that plans the area.
Absolutely, yeah, we've talked a lot with Phyllis, we've talked with Dave, um, so yeah, absolutely.
Dave Work, you spoke to him?
Yeah, he walked the property with us, yeah.
Excellent.
Yep.
Okay. Anybody else? So is the board comfortable with moving forward on this and saying that we cannot give you a yes tonight, we can't pass a resolution approving this, but this would be subject or contingent upon bringing us a site plan that we can take a look at, we can feel comfortable with, and that Senior Hudson can feel comfortable with, and obviously, security and all that.
What, when do you need it by?
Tomorrow. Soon as you can.
Okay.
Remember, I'd like to, my commitment to you before was, the board will vote up or down in November, but you wanna know going into November that you're on the right track, or I've gotta pull pitch and go somewhere in another direction.
No, a hundred percent, so wh- when's, is it this meeting next month, is it this time next month?
Yeah, so.
I can get it to you.
It's the second and third Monday, Monday of every, uh, very month is the work session and business meeting, but with November having Thanksgiving in it, no, it should be the, it should be the third Monday.
We're, we're off the second Monday, so yes, it'll be the third Monday.
It'll be the third Monday.
Third Monday, okay, November, yeah, and then I think absolutely, let's walk the property too before then.
Chris?
Yeah.
That's just the formality, you'll know before that, if we meet with Central Hud- Central Hudson, if we meet with Senior Hudson,
Yeah.
Um, and we don't get their, their, their buy-in,
Yeah.
Unfortunately, they're, they're the one-thousand-pound gorilla on the block, it won't happen, so if they get the buy-in and the board is comfortable with everything else from the, from your plan, I, I think we'd move forward with it. And then you would know that it'll be voted on then, but at least it'd allow you to not have to look at other venues.
Yep.
I, for one, I think, I don't speak for everybody, but I like the idea of it being in the village, I like it being here, I know that you're uptown, but you're also part of the New York Forward process moving forward, one of the ten projects, which I know you're excited about, and we are too. And I think having something from Vet Rep down here in the village, if it can be done safely and if it can keep our property in pristine condition, go for it.
Appreciate it, yeah, reach out to, set up a time to walk through.
Reach out as soon as you can, and then, yes, you'll, uh, I'll make it available to any other member of the board that wants to do the walkthrough, but especially Bill, and obviously remember, probably Dave Work from the Donahue Committee to be there, and you'll have to make your salesman pitch there, and trust me, they're a lot, they're a lot harder than we are.
No, it's good, we wouldn't have gotten this far unless we talked to Dave first, so yeah, be happy to walk it.
All right, thank you. Anything else, any other alibis? Chris, thank you, you're welcome to sit around for more Rukenal with No Nova game, or you can go on.
As, as long as, as long as my kid doesn't decapitate anybody out there, I'd, I'd be happy.
All right, let's, you got it, thank you, thank you for that. Okay, um, so first of all, as we move into department head reports, um, the DPW Superintendent Dave Halverson is upstate at a NICOM, the New York Conference of Mayors, um, Highway Department meeting, um, so he is not here. Um, and the Water Superintendent Mike Traynor is away, he's at a district on vacation, so Dan Nye, who is the, I got it, Dan, let me get this, Water Maintenance Team Leader.
Working leader.
I knew I was gonna blow it, Water Maintenance Working Leader is sitting in, um, for Mike if we have any questions when we get down to the, uh, reports. Um, yes, ma'am? Oh, yeah, okay, yeah, no, I was just giving him that, yep, I gotta do minutes in the treasure report. All right, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from the September eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three board meeting and the October second, two thousand and twenty-three special meeting, um, and let me just make sure, was everybody in attendance at both of those?
I was not at the nine eighteen one.
So I gotta do these separately, I'm gonna make a motion to approve the minutes from the September eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three board meeting, which was a work session, or was that a board meeting? No, that was the board, the business meeting.
That was the business.
That was the business meeting, um, on September eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, I believe Bill, Dave and Lori Beth were there, correct? It was four of us, all right, may I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
With one extension, abstention. All right, and I'd also like to make a motion to approve the minutes from the October second, two thousand and twenty-three special meeting, which was the Water System Master Plan, um, Preliminary Talks, which was a joint meeting between the town and the village. I believe all of us were there except for Deputy Mayor Kane again, so I'm gonna make a, a motion to approve the October second, two thousand and twenty-three special meeting minutes. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
With one abstention. All right, the Treasurers' Report, the Open Utility Bouncers' Report.
Just, I'm sorry, do we also have, did we have a work session on the second? Am I crazy? I'm sorry.
No, no, the special meeting was not, that's the work session, that's not the special meeting. Um, 'cause we had, let me look at my calendar, yeah, we had a work session sandwiched in there too. So we did a work session on the second, Columbus Day was the ninth, so we didn't, so work session was the second. Um, and then our meeting now, yeah, the, the joint meet, the special meeting was actually last month, that was September twenty-seventh. All right, so that's not a special meeting, so Bill, thank you for that catch, the October second, two thousand and twenty-three, um, meeting was a work session.
So I don't abstain and withdraw my abstention.
Were you at that work session?
Yes.
Two weeks, the, two weeks ago Monday, all right, all in favor, or all in? All right.
As revised.
As revised, October second was the work session, September eighteenth was the last business meeting, thank you, Bill. All right, Treasurers' Report, the Open Utility Bouncers' Report for the end of August reads as follows, Village Water Sewer Garbage and Penalties, two hundred forty-nine thousand, five hundred forty-two dollars and fifty-three cents, Town Water and Penalties, five hundred and fourteen thousand, eight hundred twenty-nine dollars and fifty-six cents. Yep, and I gotta go off of that, and the Warrant Number Ten stands at eight hundred and fifty-five thousand, three hundred thirty-two dollars and sixteen cents, with monthly revenues and expenditure reports by fund. In the general fund revenue, there's four million, seventy-nine thousand, three hundred fifty-six thousand and eighty-five cents, with expenditures of two million, eight hundred sixty-three thousand, six hundred and six dollars and ten cents. Water Fund Revenue currently stands at one million, seven hundred nineteen thousand, five hundred sixty-two dollars and thirteen cents, with expenditures one million, three hundred fifty-four thousand, one hundred thirty-nine dollars and twenty-one cents. Sewer Fund Revenues of three hundred and thirty-seven thousand, four hundred and forty-one dollars and five cents, with expenditures of a hundred fourteen thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars and ninety-two cents. For total receipts, of six million, one hundred thirty-six thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars and three cents, or seventy-four point eight-four percent in anticipated revenues, um, and four million, three hundred thirty-two thousand, two hundred sixty-six dollars and twenty-three cents, or fifty-two point eight-four percent in anticipated expenditures through the, end of the month of September. The amount collected in Village Taxes and Penalties, two million, eight hundred thirty-one thousand, nine hundred and thirty-five dollars, even through the month of September. The balance collected of the sewer capital, six hundred and twenty thousand, five hundred and fifty-eight dollars and one cent through September thirtieth. Any questions on the Treasurers' Report?
George, you just happen to know in regards to the last item for the sewer capital, when our next payment to the town, we don't know if we can find out from the town, when the next payment, when they anticipate the next payment's gonna be.
And is that done quarterly, monthly, annually?
I, I think it's, at this point, I kinda remember it annually, I think we've only really made one payment, maybe two at the most, but I, I definitely remember one.
Okay. All right, moving on to Board Department Reports, trustee Carnwright, the Building Department.
Sorry, sir, do we have to, uh, resolve, pass the warrant, authorize the warrant?
Who warned them? Who warned number ten?
Ah, da, 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 I didn't.
It's on here.
Yep. All right, so I'm going to make a motion to approve Warrant Number Ten, um, in the amount of eight hundred fifty-five thousand, three hundred and thirty-two dollars and sixteen cents. May I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you for catching that, Bill.
Sure.
All right, moving on, Dave, Building Department.
Report for September twenty twenty-three. Building permits issued eighteen, certificate of compliance occupancy issued seventeen, onsite inspections thirty-eight, violations zero, stop work orders zero, municipal searches five, solar panels three, fire inspections four. Manny Carmona, Code Enforcement Officer.
Mr. Carmona, anything to add? Any questions from the Village Board of the Building Inspector, Code Enforcement Officer? Nope. All right, moving on to the Fire Department, Trustee Brain.
Cornwall and Hudson Fire Department, October first, twenty twenty-three, September twenty-three, twenty twenty-three Department Report. Under Events, there were three EMS calls, one structure fire, one gas leak, five automatic alarms, one wired down, one call for burnt food, one September eleventh ceremony, five apparatus and station maintenance events, two meetings, and seven drills for a total of twenty-seven events. Under Notes here, the chief has said that Tanker four one five is back from repairs. The pump packing was adjusted, a valve leak was repaired, and several gauges were replaced. Still needs the tank to pump valve, uh, the tank to pump valve repaired and the tank gauge replaced. Current gauge cannot be repaired because the manufacturer is out of business. We have still, uh, item two, we still have not located replacement tires for Engine four one two. We may have to replace the wheels on the apparatus. Number three, emergency vehicle response completed the evaluation of the village's fire apparatus. They would like to present that report to the Village Trustees and Board of Fire Commissioners at an upcoming meeting. And number four, Boat four one six will be removed from the water this month. The Cornwall Yacht Club has asked that all boats be removed by October twenty-eighth. The boat will remain in service for another month or so before it is taken out of service for the winter. Respectfully submitted, Charles R. Quinn, Fire Chief.
Chief, it begs the question, the burnt food call. Fire on the stove? Fire in the microwave?
It was Wood Avenue, that's all.
It was Wood, Wood My Street, probably one of those people up on the mountain, if you know what I mean.
Was everyone okay?
That was Duncan Avenue, everybody was fine.
All right.
That was Duncan Avenue.
All right.
Um, with, with respect.
Any, any, any structure damage from that?
No.
Okay.
No.
All right.
Was the food actually burnt?
Oh, yeah. Well burnt. With respect to, uh, the, the fleet evaluation, I spoke with Mike Wilbur today. He can make the, uh, Board Meeting on the twentieth, if that works for.
Hey, Chief, that's a business meeting. Do you want him here at a business meeting or a work session? Which is more appropriate?
Well, I, I think a business meeting is more appropriate.
Okay.
Uh, um, excuse me, I think a work session is more appropriate, but he can't be here on the thirteenth, he has another equipment.
We entertain him on the twentieth.
Great.
Doris, so make sure it's on the agenda and we're good to go.
And I also like to, uh, call out that we had a softball tournament this weekend. Cornwall and Hudson prevailed against the, uh, Cornwall Fire Department and our Village DPW. It's a tournament that we've started recently in memory of Matt Clancy, who was a beloved member of both Storm King Highland and a, um, employee of the Water Department in the village.
So the good guys won, is what you're saying?
The good guys won.
All right.
It only took three years, but we finally won.
Was there any hardware associated with that victory? Do you get any, is there a loving cup or?
There, there is a cup at the firehouse on display.
And that stays there, it's like the Stanley Cup, it stays there until it transfers back if you lose.
That's right.
Got it. All right, any other questions for the chief? All right, Chief, thank you. All right, Bill, you're still on then with the fire, with the, uh, Police Department?
Cornwall and Hudson Police Department, Monthly Police Report, September first through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. There were four hundred eleven total calls for service. Uh, there were zero felony calls. Under misdemeanors and violations, there was one call for fraud or identity theft, and one call for harassment or aggravated harassment. There were zero arrests. Vehicle and Traffic Enforcement, there was one personal injury accident, five property damage accidents, five traffic summonses issued, two traffic warnings issued, three parking summonses issued, five traffic enforcement posts, and three radar, uh, speed or radar sign postings. Noncriminal activity, uh, the department was, was responded to ten fire response calls, two domestic incidents, five alarm response calls, four noise complaints, one suspicious, suspicious incident call, two animal complaints, and two disorderly person calls. Departmental assists, the department assisted the Town of Cornwall PD four times, EMS six times, other agencies once, performed a welfare check, assisted citizens two times, and that is it. During the month of September twenty twenty-three, the Village of Cornwall and Hudson Police Department assisted with both traffic and security for the third annual Cheryl Walker Five K Walk or Run Cancer Charity Road Race Event. During the month of September, Cornwall and Hudson PD had an additional six body worn cameras installed and placed into service. The COH PD Body Worn Cameras now use, utilize a card scanning system. When an officer comes on duty, they scan their assigned card onto the card scanner. This assigns a particular ba- body worn camera to that officer. System is particularly beneficial when an officer works overtime and his or her camera loses its charge. The officer will then use the same card scan system and have another body worn camera assigned to him or her. Respectfully submitted, Chief Stephen E. Dixon.
Chief, anything to add? Any Board Member comments, questions for the chief? Seeing none, Trustee Paliota, you have the Department of Public Works.
Village of Cornwall and Hudson, Department of Public Works, September twenty twenty-three. Trash collected for the month, one hundred and six point three five tons. Recycling collected for the month, twenty th- twenty-three point twenty-five tons. Yard waste collected for the month? Eighty yards. Mowing and trimming of village-owned properties, sweeping of streets, blacktop patching, repairs and maintenance of villa, village-owned vehicles, replaced two hundred feet of twenty-four inch cover pipe on Church Street washed out during July storms. Drainage improvements at ninety-three Duncan Avenue. Assisted Town of New Windsor with trucking for their milling operation. Dug out ditch lines on Deer Hill Road to improve drainage in area of, um,
Storm King.
Storm King School. Notes, fall, bulk pickup will be October sixteenth. We are still awaiting delivery of our new fleet maintenance vehicle, the cab and chassis.
Chassis.
Chassis, sorry. Have been delivered to the dealer and they have begun to install the body and equipment. We have taken delivery of new four-wheel drive dump truck and plow. Wing plow calcium setup with ground speed controls for more efficient distribution of salt, and it will be in service for the winter session. David Halverson, Superintendent of Public Works.
Sounds like a hell of a truck, I'm excited about that. All right, so, um, the DPW Superintendent, as I advised, is upstate at a conference. Will be back in town on Thursday. And I'll just add to this, um, you might have noticed the pavilion going up down at the, uh, Donahue Memorial Park waterfront. Is not being erected by our DPW, actually, Sparanza Contracting is doing that. And they got the trusses up, and I think they started to work on the roof today, and they think they might be able to have it complete, um, by the end of the week. We won't do any ribbon cuttings, we won't do anything official. We're not going to stop people from sitting there or going there, but we won't do an open to the public thing until probably next spring. We'll, we'll, we'll do it upright, we're ordering picnic tables, and then the board's got to figure out what we wanted to include beyond picnic tables. Do we want to put a grill down there, or is that a bad idea? And then what our reservation property is going to be. It's going to be first come, first served, unless and until somebody res- reserves it in advance, and then we got to figure out what the tariff is going to be on that, um, and how we handle town, village, visitors, groups, schools, what our policy is going to be. So give us some time over the winter to think about that and discuss it. Um, and lastly, um, and I got to thank CSX for this, it's not always that we get our way, but, um, after the storm of July ninth, the destructive storm that destroyed, um, lots of our roadways, but when CSX moved their crews in and the men and the materiel and the equipment and the heavy-duty excavators and the, and the rock and all that stuff and dumped in the parking lot, they really did a number on the parking lot and the, and Shore Road from the bottom of Dock Hill Road all the way to the railroad tracks. I thought it was a long shot that we would get them to repair all of it. They sent a guy down from Albany and he took a look at it, and with the help of Dave Halverson, we made our appeal and our case to them, and they have agreed to pay for it. We start paving it November fourth, which I thought was appropriate, allows people to use it for the summer, but we want to get it all repaired and, 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 and done right before the cold winter months move in. But we're going to have a new parking lot and a new road down there, um, on November fourth and fifth. And we also are going to be doing the parking lot, which was a handshake deal we made with the Hudson Island Nature Museum. Um, and Tom Bregman drives a hard bargain, in fact, we made the deal to repair, repave the parking lot down there at the same time. So you'll see Tilkon trucks down at the river, you'll see Tilkon trucks and our guys helping out. At the museum, um, doing the circular driveway as well as their parking area, and then the village is going to build a nice paver walkway to the front door, so, um, look out for that. It's going to happen, uh, probably the first and into the second week of November. All right, any question, any questions on, uh, DPW events, issues? Nope. All right, moving on, and the Water Department, Trustee Carnright. Look alive, Mr. Ny, he might be coming to you.
September, Water Department, September twenty twenty-three, Monthly Report. Monthly production, eighteen million, nine hundred and eighty-nine thousand gallons. Daily average, six hundred and thirty-three thousand gallons. We collect twenty-four samples in accordance with our approved water quality monitoring plan. Nezdek Speedies Permit has been issued. Preliminary work is being completed to bring the plant online under treatment. Transmission and distribution, sixty-nine utility markouts were completed. Pressure complaint, two Woodhaven Court, uh, found to be internal plumbing issue. New water service installed, twenty-six Duncan Avenue. Curve valve repaired, forty-one Isro Drive. Leak repaired by property owner, nineteen Mountain Road. Blacktop leak sites. Meters, red commercial meters, red town and village residential meters. Ten final water meter readings were completed. Seventy residential water meters replaced. Six meter transmitters, mitters replaced. Sixteen water line inspections were completed. Sixteen miscellaneous repairs were completed. Property maintenance, routine property mowing and dam maintenance. Respectfully submitted, Michael P. Trainer, Senior Water Department Superintendent.
Sir, anything to add to the report? Anything to, anything big this week?
Nope, just, uh, continuing working on storm cleanup from the, uh, summer storm.
No issues with, uh, water main breaks, and I probably just jinxed you right now by mentioning that, so.
Well, um, yes, but as far as, uh, past history, um, we are doing a fire flow test on Maple Street this Friday, and.
Maple Street's the one on the mountain?
No, I'm in town by the hospital, Willow Avenue and Laurel.
Oh, yeah, okay, so there's four of them. We have Maple Avenue, Maple Road, Maple.
Three, yep, Maple Ave, Maple Road, and Village, and then Maple Street in the town.
Got it.
So we'll be conducting a fire flow test, yes.
Got it, by the hospital.
Conducting a what?
Fire flow test.
Explain what that is.
So what we'll be doing is the engineers, our engineers are coming down, will be conducting, will be running the fire hydrants, um, flowing for gallons per minute and pressure, um, for them to determine the proper water main size for the new water main that will be going in on there.
Replacement main, right?
Yes. Also, I was contacted by a company who is looking to do a fire suppression system inside a building on Maple Street, and they want to do a fire flow test. We were going to wait until we did the flushing, but now that we're doing a fire flow test with our engineers, we're going to do them at the same time. So in accordance to the leaks, there will probably be a leak on Maple Street next week. Guaranteed.
Now to happen, right?
Guaranteed.
Yeah, um, thank you for that. One of the things, you know, we had the, we had the water, the water, the joint special Water System Master Plan meeting between the two boards, and our engineers presented, the Water Department, Mike Trainer presented, the Water Committee, which is made up of citizens of the town and the village, a member of the Town Council, a member of the Village Board, um, weighed in. One of the things that I think this board, um, and I know we don't have water on the agenda tonight, but something to think about, we've been asked by FEMA in regards to security at our water sites. And, um, one of the things I think that's distressing to me, coming from the profession that I came from, is that since we have two critical sectors inside of, of, that the village is responsible for, water and wastewater systems, I know the town has, has, has the sewer, but also reservoirs and dams. And I know, like, most of you hikers or dog walkers know that have, that have gone up to, you know, to the reservoirs, we all do it, that there's no, there's no security there whatsoever. The access to our drinking water sources, meaning the most valuable one, those five reservoirs up there, is pretty easy to access.
Yes.
On our facilities and treatment plants, um, and our well field, we don't have it screened by fencing. So I know we have cameras and we have other security devices out there, correct, Dan?
Yes, yes, that.
We got security cameras, alarm system?
Yep.
That kind of stuff.
Yes.
It is a federal crime to do anything to impact or infect, um, a water system. And that's as much as somebody just dumping some chemicals up there in Alec Meadow Reservoir. As simple as that. So it is something we're going to look on and something that I am going to add to the Water System, uh, Master Plan for consideration. There might be some grants out there, but it is something that we need to look at. Nobody wants to put fences around reservoirs. Nobody wants to put fences around the beautiful properties where we have water facility treatment plants on, but we got to figure out a better system for, uh, for security there.
That's a lot of fencing to go around the reservoirs.
That would be a lot of fencing and.
Lot of rock to deal with.
Yeah, exactly, so. All right, any other, any questions? Oh, go ahead, Bill.
Sorry, just, uh, it says, uh, the Speedies Permit has been issued, preliminary work, uh, being completed to bring the plant online. Is that Blackrock Park?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
And is that, um, once it's online, and we haven't been drawing off it because of the Speedies Permit for a long time, we've been using Taylor Road, do we anticipate that we will shift some of the daily volume?
Yes.
All right, so.
Big thing.
All right, good to know, thank you.
Any other trustee, any alibis? Thank you, sir. You can't leave yet, though. All right, moving on to New Windsor and Cornwall EMS, Deputy Mayor Kane.
Okay, New Windsor EMS report for September twenty twenty-three. So with respect to
Excuse me.
personnel, three paramed- paramedics were terminated as they did not work or submit availability for over ninety days. As for operational, there were four hundred and twenty-four total dispatches, one hundred percent of the calls were covered. That's the, uh, the keynote. Two hundred and eighty-six patients were transported. There were over thirty-seven hundred and fifty calls for the year, and on track for a little bit less than five thousand calls. There were two hundred and forty-three to New Windsor, fifty to Cornwall, and five to the village. Mutual aid ALS standbys provided sixty-six times to various locations or private transports, non-emergency transports for residents. Response times, it was six point four three, six minutes, forty-three seconds for New Windsor, five minutes, thirty-seven seconds for Cornwall, and six minutes, fifty seconds for Cornwall and Hudson. The Cornwall unit covered fourteen calls in New Windsor, and the New Windsor covered five calls in Cornwall and the village. More operational, all patient carrying equipment was inspected, serviced, and repaired. New se- suction units were purchased and installed, and new AED units were ordered and six, and are sixteen weeks out, replacing units that are fifteen years old. Two replacement, uh, CPR machines were ordered to replace units that are twelve years old. New airway intubation equipment was purchased. The new ambulance is six to eight weeks out, it's going to replace the two thousand and sixteen ambulance. Assemblyman, um, he gets, uh, legislative grant was approved for training, education, and paramedic staffing for fifty thousand dollars, which is excellent. Funds will be used for a new cardiac monitor and patient simulator. Issues with doors at the Cornwall Station are being resolved, and the new patio for the staff was completed. And with respect to our administrative or other, the twenty twenty-four budget's completed. The grant with Senator Scufus' office, uh, shows to be approved. The grant with Senator Scoofus's office uh shows to be approved. This was made possible with the help of the town and New Windsor support and funding. And work is beginning on the Department of Health recertification. The Cornwall fund drive went out and New Windsor EMS responded to the bus, miller vehicle accident in Wallkill. And we staffed all six ambulances and assisted in the coverage across Orange County. And that's it.
All right, thank you. Any questions um for the deputy mayor regarding EMS? I mean, I think it's, it's, it goes without saying that the fact that month after month after month, we hear one hundred percent of calls answered. That's the gold standard and it's what we expect and that's what we're getting. So. Nobody have anything on that? We can move on to resolutions. All right, gentlemen and gentle lady. Um, there are four resolutions on there. The board, I'll say upfront, has approved all these expenditures. Um, so this is some housekeeping within the budget and moving things around. So I'm gonna first introduce a resolution and I'm gonna move for the adoption of said, of same. Um, I'm gonna make a motion to transfer funds from line Alpha five nine nine, which is the fund balance, to Alpha five one one zero point four one zero, which is the street maintenance equipment line in the amount of two hundred and seventy-eight thousand, two hundred and ninety dollars and seventy-four cents to pay for an international dump truck. May I have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Next resolution, I'm gonna make a motion to transfer funds from Alpha seven three one zero point one, which is recreation salaries to Alpha seven three one zero point four recreation expense line in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars to pay the IMA, the intermunicipal agreement between the town and the village for summer camp. If you'll recall, we agreed thirty thousand dollars to be split between the town and the village to co-conjoin camps and hold them at, hold it at Lee Road last year, and the village agreed to that. May I have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Um, and just keep in mind, we do not have a plan yet for next summer. Um, there's been some talk about um, the camp may have to be moved if it's run together um to Willow, or we can separate and do something different. I think it was successful last year, but we'll talk about that. After we, after we go through the budget season, we'll talk about what our plans are for next year. But we do not have the same place or the same agreement in place. It was a one-time deal. And the construction is supposed to go on in the school system for the next two years. Okay, next item. Um, I'm gonna make a motion to transfer funds from Alpha five nine nine, the fund balance line, to Alpha seven one four zero point four, the parks maintenance line in the amount of thirty thousand dollars to pay for the construction of the pavilion. If you'll recall, the pavilion started with a sixty-five thousand dollar dormitory authority state of New York grant, which I believe was received through Senator Scoofus's office. The village matched that um and then agreed to pay for the uh erection and construction of same. And the thirty thousand dollars is to cover that. Um, so may I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And lastly, um, I'm gonna make a resolution to transfer funds from, from uh whiskey W nine seven one zero point six, the water serial bond principal to whiskey or W nine seven three zero point six, the water ban principle in the amount of forty-three thousand dollars to pay for the ban for the dump truck slash mini excavator. May I have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Aye.
Aye.
Uh, all in favor? Aye, sorry. All right, and lastly, um, I'm gonna make a motion to transfer funds from Alpha two seven zero five, the COH donation line to Alpha three one two zero point four, the Cornwall and Hudson Police Department expense line in the amount of five hundred dollars. Chief, that was a donation from somebody who was kind enough to wanna donate to the police department. We require it to come through the village first and then we move the money into your police line, correct? Okay, um, may I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Annual slop, supply bids. Um, I'm gonna introduce the following resolution. I'm gonna ask for adoption. Um, whereas the village board has received bid documents and specifications for the solicitation of water treatment chemicals, off-road diesel fuel and sludge removal services, and whereas the village board has reviewed the bid documents and specifications and approves the same, excuse me. Now therefore be it hereby resolved that the village board hereby authorize the publication of the notice to bidders indicating that bids will be accepted as follows. Excuse me. Number one, until two PM on November ninth, two thousand and twenty-three for water treatment chemicals. Number two, until two fifteen PM on November ninth, two thousand and twenty-three for off-road diesel fuel. And number three, until two thirty PM on November ninth, two thousand and twenty-three for sludge removal services. May I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, the next one is gonna probably take a little bit of discussion, not too much. We're not gonna resolve it tonight. But as the water system draft master plan and discussions between the town and the village have been ongoing now for some time. One of the issues that's come before this board and come before the water committee was the fact that the village by code has a different rate that we charge our customers, our clients in the village um for water. It is twelve dollars per thousand gallons. In the town, we cha- ta- charge town residents sixteen dollars per thousand gallons. I'm not good at math, but that is a thirty-sixth percent disparity. Well, by village code, it's supposed to be eighty percent, but it hasn't been. It's been lowered in the last ten years um quite significantly. And it's not just the last ten years, but it's supposed to be at eighty percent. Eighty percent would mean that the town will be paying significantly more than what they're paying right now. You could just imagine it's, it's doubling what they're paying right now. It's probably um, what is that Jimmy? Like thirty-three dollars? I mean, it, you would be, yeah, it would be doubling. Thirty, thirty dollars. Um, so for some reason over the years it was moved. Well, people have been asking, what's the history of this? Well, the nice thing about having a records management clerk now, who is pretty dogged when I ask her for, to pull things up, is that a document from a special meeting on September third of nineteen seventy-four was detected. And it starts out like this. A special meeting of the board of trustees was held on September third, nineteen seventy-four. I was in the third grade at the village office. The meeting was called to order by Mayor Donahue. Interestingly enough, the same Doc Donahue, whose name is on the farm down there, and was our family vet in the late sixties, by the way. And the following people were present. Mayor Donahue, trustee Farnsworth, love that name, trustee Caston, trustee Trainer and trustee Brazel. Also present was Mr. Raymond Bradford, village attorney and Mr. Charles La Forge, Superintendent of Public Works. The meeting was called to order at eight oh four PM by the mayor. Trustee Farnsworth, this is interesting, chair lady of the water committee presented the following motion. Um, I think Mike said she was um a trustee for like twenty years or something like that. But she didn't have kids at home. You're the first one.
Cordisco's house is on her property.
No way.
Yes.
Wow. Alright, so trustee Farnsworth, the chair lady of the water committee, presented the following motion to the board. Quote, "In order that the taxpayers of the village of Cornwall should not be penalized for higher assessments on the water facilities in the town of Cornwall, the water committee recommends raising the water rates for those users outside the corporate limits of the village of Cornwall to eighty percent in excess of present village rates and an increase of hydrant rental from fifty-five dollars to one hundred dollars per year per hydrant." September third, nineteen seventy-four, signed off, and there's some other matters that were discussed on there too. It was signed off on by the mayor and the village board. It was approved. It's been our code since nineteen seventy-four. So during the nineties, it was lowered to seventy percent. Um, and then in the last ten years, it was lowered to fifty-two percent. And then five years ago, or six years ago, it was lowered to thirty-six percent. I got no problem with, I understand town people don't, would not wanna pay eighty percent higher than the rates that we're paying. But they charge us property tax and school taxes on pieces of property where our water treatment facility plants are. To me, it just doesn't make sense. So as we're looking at water rates right now and where those water rates should be, um, I would be interested in counselor. I know that you've had some experience in, 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 in dealing with properties that um contiguous communities are paying rent on essentially, where they have a treatment facility or municipal buildings that are essentially servicing the entire greater Cornwall area community. Um, I would just submit to the board that this is something that the board as the convening, as the convened water committee essentially um takes a look at and says, if we're not gonna charge them eighty percent, which our code states we have to do, then why haven't we changed the code? And if we are gonna charge them eighty percent, or maybe there's a way to make some type of deal where each municipality can feel like they got the better end of the deal, where we keep water rates the same, or adjust them more appropriately, and maybe the town either waives or assumes responsibility for the, I think it's around twenty-four thousand dollars in property taxes and a hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars in school taxes. It's over two hundred thousand dollars a year that we pay to the town. So for tonight, we're supposed to go through this pro forma exercise where I read to you that we're going to send a letter to the town council and ask them to consider waiving the property taxes.
We do it every year.
We do it every year. And it takes the town council, 'cause I've watched every meeting over the last five years. It takes them exactly twenty seconds to come up with five I-votes to shoot it down. So what I'm suggesting is that we continue to research this and look at this. And so long as Joe, our counselor, that there is no reason why we could not strike a deal um to mitigate us paying property taxes in a fairly substantial amount in return for keeping water rates lower than our code requires. Or we just simply go back and change the code. But right now, they're paying thirty-six percent above ours and the code requires any outside user of the village of Cornwall and Hudson to pay eighty percent.
Is it, uh, so, are we open for discussion?
Absolutely.
Uh, is the, the town rate per thousand gallons is eighteen cents or sixteen cents?
Sixteen dollars.
Dollars per thousand.
Sixteen per thousand, ours is twelve. That's the thirty-six percent differential.
Thank you. Uh, that was one question. The other question was, um, you mentioned the school district and the school taxes, which are not charged or collected by the town, to my knowledge, right? So we're talking twenty-four thousand dollars in town property tax. We don't list the school board or the school district here as one of the uh entities to be petitioned to waive or reduce uh the tax bill. Is that, is there a reason for that?
No, that should be part of.
I think we say um petition the county of Orange, town of Cornwall and town of New Windsor to grant.
Yeah, we, I, we didn't have, we've never had the school district as a, as a party to this.
No.
Well, this.
They have nothing, they're not gonna do that.
Right, and I don't know that we could set a separate uh rate for them uh outside of the, you know, 'cause the, the number that you quoted is far greater for the, for the school taxes, 'cause they're a larger percentage of our tax bill.
But the property is in the town.
Yeah, but Dan.
They would be responsible for the.
The assessment on that property.
Right.
Assessment on that property.
Isn't there also a commercial rate?
Yes, twenty-one dollars and sixty cents is your commercial rate.
Per thousand gallons?
Per thousand, yes.
Um.
So like if we had.
Commercial rate.
Yes, if there's a, a vendor that comes in and would like to purchase water, that's what we charge them.
No, no, the town doesn't get commercial. The town, the municipality of the town gets the commercial rate on a lot of stuff, don't they?
We charge, no, we charge the town, water at town hall, what, what rate are we charging them?
Municipal, uh, they get a reduction, trust me.
Don't, um, I believe we charge them twelve dollars.
That's right.
Yeah.
Doris would actually know that better than I would.
And I know that the, the current town council is, is working diligently to get the pool repaired. Um, and one of the things that, when I first got in this spot, was that the then supervisor came to me and said, it's, we do this every year. I'm gonna ask you that the thousands and thousands and thousands and thousands of gallons of water that leak out of that pool every year, 'cause it hasn't been fixed and they couldn't find what the cause was and leak into Rings Pond, that they wanted us to charge them the village rate for that leaked water.
Yes, and I.
Treated water. And, and we, and, and we've been doing it.
Yes, and I do know that with the work that we did at the town pool and helped them out, um, we did.
Slowed the, the leakage?
Not even that, but we replaced a um about nine feet of four-inch water main. We installed a four-inch gate valve and a brand-new meter um for that building. Um, and that's when we rented the vac truck and we did all that for them.
Because most of the equipment in that building, and I've been in it.
It was dangerous, yes. Yes, it was dangerous. It was, it was a matter of time before it blew apart and we would've been in trouble.
But getting back to the rates on that, so we give them, we give them the village rate wherever we can.
Right.
But, yeah, we're not giving them the commercial rate, not, 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 not in the town at all for anything. We're giving them that rate. So the question becomes, do we raise this to the town? I mean, I can do this right now. I can, we can vote on this resolution right now. Um, and, and maybe here, let me hear from the rest of you. We can vote on this resolution right now. Or I can say we hold this, I don't wanna say in abeyance, but we hold this until we make a determination on this. Is there a drop dead time that this has to happen, Doris or Joe? Is it, does it have to be done now?
It's gotta be done before the assessment.
But the assessment isn't until next spring.
So why do we do it now?
Joe, it, but ta- uh, I don't think that's necessarily true, because you're, the taxes are, the taxes are due by January thirtieth. And it's based on your, on your assessment. So would not have to be, that's why we're doing it now.
I don't think so, right? Because the twenty-three assessment is finalized in July.
Yes.
The tax assessment for twenty-four would also have to be finalized next July.
It's July for the following year.
Oh, yeah.
Right.
Yes, I'm a year.
But it's still July.
Okay, so what I'm saying is, but I, we're under no time crunch right now, Joe, correct?
I don't believe so.
Okay, alright. So i- i- is anybody, does anybody think that we just need to do this and, and then take this debate up later?
Wait for the water uh commission.
Well, that could be a couple of months, Dave. I mean, that's the thing. The reality of it is, we, it could be a couple of months.
I don't see any harm in petitioning them to waive the tax.
Oh, yeah, no, we always do that. We should do that.
This is the thing we always do. This makes sense to me. I guess, question I would raise is, do we have time or inclination to understand the larger tax bill, which is the school property tax or the school tax?
Well, it should, it should inclu- it should include the school tax.
It should include the school tax, but now the, the entities that are named here can't do it. And I don't know, can the school district do it?
The exemption.
The exemption would be from the town, because they're on the hook for the school taxes.
No, the exa- no, the, no, the exemption is for every taxing jurisdiction.
No, but what I'm saying is, what we're asking for is exemption from the entire tax package, the assessment, which says your town taxes are twenty and change. Your school taxes are almost, you know, one, a hundred and ninety.
I don't, I don't believe so. That's what I'm saying. You request an exemption from each different taxing jurisdiction. The is, the town assessor sets the assessment for the property. That generates the tax from each of the taxing jurisdictions. The request for exempt, that's why the request right now is for the county, the town and others. And should it also include, should also include the school district? And I'm looking up the statute right now.
Well, I guess we shouldn't pass this yet, then.
Yeah.
If we're gonna amend it.
Um, and then my question is this, Joe, I, well, I don't think that is correct, is then why in nineteen seventy-four would they have done this? Because imagine, let's, let's for argument's sake.
Maybe, maybe the town rejected their request for the, for the um exemption. And then the town, then the village just raised the rates to offset it.
Do that so drastically and dramatically, eighty percent over for, let's do, let's do twenty-four thousand dollars in nineteen seventy-four dollars. It was probably what, three thousand dollars?
Okay, may- maybe I shouldn't speculate, but, but also there, there's a difference in the way that the maintenance is done. My understanding is that the village maintains the water lines in the town and provides water service. The town provides sewer service to the village, but the village has an entire main, has a whole department maintaining the sewer lines.
Our DPW does that.
Right.
Okay, alright, so what are you saying? Is this an action item I give to you to, to research this and let me know what we should do?
Gi- give me a couple of minutes. I'm working on it right now.
Right now?
I'm trying.
Okay, alright, I'm gonna move on to something else then while you're doing. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, let's get an answer and figure out what makes sense. Alright, this is, this is an easier one. The election resolution. Um, let me make this following resolution and then I will ask for its adoption. Um, whereas the New York State election law mandates that each village must establish the polling place and hours that the polls will be open for village elections. And whereas the village aboard, the village board of Cornwall and Hudson, after due consideration hereon, has determined the polling location and hours of voting in accordance with the standards set forth in the New York State election law. Now therefore let it be hereby resolved by the village board of Cornwall and Hudson that pursuant to New York State election law, section fifteen dash one oh four subsection three, the location of the polls for the election of March nineteenth, twenty twenty-four shall be the village hall located at three two five Hudson Street, Cornwall and Hudson, New York, one two five two zero. And be it further resolved by the village board of the village of Cornwall and Hudson that public voting for two village trustees for terms of two years will be conducted on March nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, with the polls remaining open between the hours of six AM and nine PM. So I'm gonna make a motion that we accept that as our um vote, what was the exact title of that? As, as our election resolution on that date in this location for those two trustee positions and between those hours. May I have a second?
Second.
Um, all, uh, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, um, that's that. Moving on to other business. Um, okay, we discussed the fact that we are still working through this proposed franchise agreement with Spectrum and Verizon. Um, I don't really think, tonight, um, I know that we had, had asked for submissions for vacancy on the fire commission as we have an open position on the fire commission. And Doris, we had, what, two people put in for that? Okay, um, here's my question, Joe. I'm giving you something else while you're doing that. Um, we have two people that have requ- We have two people that have requested to be considered to be, to replace trustee Gaylord on the fire commission.
Right.
Does the village board take a look at those two resumes or CVs and then decide, is that how it best? Is it, does the fire commissioners currently installed have any say? Does the chief ever say?
Well, it's your, it's the village board's appointment.
Okay.
And it's up to you.
How to proceed?
Yeah, basically whose information you wanna take, who wants to interview, but it's your, it's your appointment.
Here's what I'm gonna ask for, both, did, did we get a submitted resume from both?
No, we did not.
Just names?
Just names.
Okay, um, I, I know who the two names are, but if you could tomorrow, send out an email to the village board, um, CC the fire chief, CC the other two fire commissioners, and just ask if anybody has any thoughts, um, I don't know both the individuals, but, you know, maybe somebody can, you know, say yea or nay, or this is why, or, you know, and maybe we should get some type of resume, wouldn't you think, Jim?
Yes.
Something from them, so maybe we ask them to give us something, I mean, it can be, it doesn't have to be a full page, but just something. So just send me a note tomorrow and I'll do that first, um, if you have an address or an email address for the, for the two, the two people, and I'll reach out to them first and then I'll, chief, you see anything, you, you think that's the way to proceed?
I think that's reasonable, like, uh, Chris McKay says, it's a forward appointment, I, I don't know either of the people.
Okay, alright, then we'll start with me at least being able to track down, uh, their CVs. Alright, um, we obviously, we obviously talked quite in depth about the Vet Rep Savage Wonder Festival. Bill, where do we stand on the Donnie Farm oil and chip, um, proposal with, uh, with the Ceni Hudson? To be able to do that to the road down there so that our vehicles don't get destroyed?
For whatever reason, I can't find that email, but I can quote roughly what I received today, which was, as to the other questions you asked us about, we are still formulating our response and look forward to getting it to you soon.
Understood.
And that refers to, we'd asked some questions about, uh, specifying that weddings, uh, would be permitted under the conservation easement as a, you know, and, and the public access plan, as well as, um, there were a couple of sort of questions that arose from the letter that we had written to them a while back, uh, but oil and chip was one of them. You know, I, I put forth our case and, um, waiting to see what they think of it.
Yeah, I, I, and probably should ask Mary Donnie, she's probably the source for this, but there's broken macadam as you obviously come off of Bayview.
Right in the very front.
Right in the front, then it veers to the left, it actually makes a Y, and then it kind of stops, obviously before you get to her property and then obviously where the road goes to the trailhead, but there was at least asphalt there before. So it's not like we'd be doing something different, but alright, if you can just stay on him, because what my fear is, it's gonna get too cold to do this. And then we're gonna be on the hook again to send our trucks down there, as we should, to plow that road and it really would be reasonable for us to get an answer from them before it gets too cold. Alright, I appreciate it, I know you're, I know you're just waiting on them. Okay, last two thi- things on, uh, other business. I'm gonna, not on the agenda here, um, first thing is the New York Ford update. So we just had our last public workshop for the New York Ford, so we've had four local planning committee meetings. Two of them were hosted here, um, I'm sorry, three of them were hosted here, um, and one was hosted in the town and the last one, which is a couple of weeks from now, will be hosted by the town. We had two public workshops, which were at Munger Cottage, we had a table set up, um, with New York Ford folks at Fall Fest to put out more information, um, we've obviously used social media, we've obviously used the village website, the town website, the village Facebook page, the town Facebook page, all the things to kind of keep people in the loop. There are ten projects currently being considered by the local planning committee. Those ten projects look like they've got a good shot at going to the next level, which is the state. I was on my second Zoom call today with the state and with the supervisor, um, and with our planner and with our engineers, going through the projects and refining cost contingency plans, all those kind of things. But I have, I have a feeling that the ten projects, you can go to Cornwall NYF, um, dot com, is it dot com or dot org? Don't quote me, it's Cornwall NYF, I think it's, I think it's dot org. But that's the New York Ford page, you can go to that and you can pull all this stuff up, you can look at these. At the last public workshop, each of the, each of the, uh, projects was presented, um, we went through them in excruciating detail, they're all good things. It's a healthy dose of not-for-profits, private sector enterprises and municipal projects. And I think this morning, we finally ticked it down to just under eight million dollars worth of requests. I think somewhere north of seven million, which is what the state wants for a four point five million dollar grant. You ask for this, the state's gonna winnow it down, but they don't want you asking for exactly what you're allocated and then they, they, you know, say no to this, no to this, no to this. So anyway, long story short, when will we know anything? Well, we have one more local planning committee meeting, which I said is, is later this month in the town, and then it'll probably be the spring before we get an answer on them. So we've got some great projects and just keep your eyes peeled and follow along and, uh, hopefully these projects will get approved, um, we got, we got some good ones. Okay, that's it, anybody any questions on New York Ford from the board? I mean, most of you have been pretty in tune with staying on top of what we're doing and attended meetings and, and, and see what we're doing. But it's been a, it's been a lengthy process, it's been a year and a half now in this for me and Josh, um, and the original team of Jason Burnham and, and Steve Jones, and we wanna land this plane. We've, 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 it's been flying well, but we wanna land this plane and make sure that we get this money. Then we have two years from project approval before shovel has, has to enter into soil. Because a lot of these projects are gonna be conjoined with other grant applications, other donations and village and town, uh, board and council approvals for monies to, to make these work. So you will have a say in the part that comes out of our budget, but as far as the rest of the four point five million dollars, we're.
Question on that, uh, at what point does it, do we budget for it in the annual budget the year before? Uh, you know, we can't know, we don't know now.
Great, great, great question, um, Josh, to discuss that, cause he's in the budget process right now. I'm getting ready to start the budget process, they're already, they already had a budget workshop in the town and he, and he talked about that. We're in a good spot because of the fact that we have a healthy fund balance. And if we had to make a board determination on moving money around, we could do it. And Bill, there was nothing there where you said, oh my god, Jimmy, Jimmy, uh, allocated a hundred and fifty thousand dollars and the board didn't vote to approve that. We're talking tens and twenties and twenty-five, you know, that's not chump change, taxpayer money, but to do something like that, we have enough wiggle room there and obviously we would talk about it and the board would vote on it. Alright?
I'm just channeling our former clerk.
Yeah, I know, oh, I know, her head, her head's probably about to explode. Alright, um, okay, lastly on the other business, and this is related to the Cornwall Yacht Club. And before I talk about leased property, Joe, do you wanna just give a general kind of, um, dump? Oh, yeah, we didn't, Jimmy, I, I'll, I'll circle back to that, I did, yeah, you're right, I, I, I missed that. You wanna give a quick dump on, on what our agreement in principle with, um, with, with, with the yacht club is in regards to Shore Road?
Yes, so, uh, we've had a number of meetings, um, with the yacht club and their council. Uh, we've performed a number of site visits, um, to try to simplify it, I think their main concern was parking on a portion of the shore road that abuts their premises, uh, storage and things like that. Uh, the yacht club made a proposal to the village that was reviewed by the board. Superintendent Halverson, I reviewed it, um, we determined, th- they were basically, uh, asking the village to define the boundaries of Shore Road. So we had a survey performed that was in accordance with what the yacht club proposed and both sides seemed to agree as to what the boundaries of Shore Road should be. Um, we have, I don't have a formal document, but we have discussed that portion of our agreement probably for at least two months or so. Uh, so it seems like we have hit upon, um, an agreement, a meeting of the minds. What we've been doing for the last few weeks, uh, at least my office with their council, we've been doing some research and we've had a telephone conference call with their council, uh, and we have proposed a mechanism, which I believe favors, uh, doesn't favor, which I believe would be helpful to both parties as to how to redefine the, the, the area of that road. We had a call last week, I explained my proposal to council, there are a few different parts of it. Their council was accepting and he's bringing back our proposal to his client. Haven't heard back yet, uh, I did ask council to, uh, try to get this resolved. Um, again, we have an agreement in principle and now we have to have an understanding of how that's gonna be, uh, finalized. So I asked with respect to the portion of finalizing our agreement, if he could get back to us so that we could take action at our November meeting, uh, which would potentially be followed up by a public hearing at our December meeting, so that we could try to complete the entire process with the yacht club before the end of the year. That was, that's my proposal to their attorney right now.
Excellent, and this all stemmed from a discussion with the yacht club in regards to that stretch of road from where the yacht club, just in front of where the yacht club begins down toward the end. That road does not go anywhere, it's a, it's the end of Shore Road for us, but the village has maintained it, the village has paved it, the village has repaved it, the village has put up guardrails, the village patches potholes, the village does snow removal, and we've been doing that for about a hundred years, so, um, you know, it's, once we get this established, at least, um, we'll have a, we'll have a record of this and, and it won't be confusing for any future administration.
And, and to put a fine point on it, if they accept, uh, what I'm, what I'm proposing, it will both achieve the village's goal, which is to maintain Shore Road as a road and keep it as what you just said, a road that we've been paving for a hundred years potentially or more, and also provide the yacht club with the flexibility that they need for a certain area, uh, along, that abuts their property.
For overflow parking.
So, um, it, it sure does seem like it would achieve both what they want and, and what the village wants.
Outstanding, thank you. Alright, I normally don't let anybody write words for me, but in this instance, I did have someone write words for me tonight in regards to the next phase of this. Um, and the next phase of this is the piece of property that is adjacent to the Cornwall Yacht Club property that the village has been leasing to the Cornwall Yacht Club for a certain amount of dollars for a number of years. And that piece of property is where there's a historic church, um, and, um, it is at the front as you're, as you're, right by the, the beachhead and just past the pavilion and in an area that the yacht club uses for storage and for whatever they want to, so my, you know what? I'm gonna stick to what was written for me by council, so I don't get out over my skis. On March seventeenth, nineteen eighty-six, it was a wonderful year, during the Reagan administration, the village and the yacht club, the village being Cornwall and Hudson, and the yacht club entered into a twenty-five year lease for a waterfront lot owned by the village and adjacent to the yacht club's property. Now, they've been down there almost seven, seventy years, Joe, do you remember, sixty-seven, seventy years, somewhere in that?
David remembers, right?
Okay?
Don't add letters.
I know, the lot.
He said he was gonna read it and he's not reading it.
I'm reading, I'm reading, the lot is the property that contains the historic Cornwall Landing Chapel. The lease provides for an annual rent of two hundred and fifty dollars. The lease provides for an annual rent of two hundred and fifty dollars. The lease also provides that the tenant, the yacht club, and not the village, not the village, has the option to extend the lease for an additional three terms of twenty-five years each for a total of one hundred years, one hundred years. Importantly, the lease provi, you didn't say that I couldn't emphasize things that are, importantly, the lease provides that the rent will remain the same, two hundred and fifty dollars per year during any renewal period. That means the village has to accept two hundred and fifty dollars per year with no rental increases. We call them escalation clauses for up to one hundred years, if the yacht club chooses to renew the lease. The village has to accept two hundred and fifty dollars per year, no rental increases, for up to one hundred years if the yacht club chooses to renew the lease. When this came to my attention, I asked the attorney for the village to review this issue. Our attorneys have now advised us that the former nineteen eighty-six village board was within its rights to lease the village's property. Our attorneys have further advised us, however, that village property may only be leased for fair consideration, which generally speaking means a fair market value rent. A lease that provides for rental value for less than fair market consideration, less than market rent could constitute an unconstitutional gift of public funds in violation of the New York State Constitution, Article Eight, Section One. Because the rent is artificially low and because it is frozen for up to one hundred years, our attorneys have advised us that the lease could be deemed void as a matter of public policy. This is a matter I intend to correct before my term ends. I must say in fairness, this is a historical problem, none of the current board members sitting on this dais and no members of the yacht club were the leaders in charge when this lease was entered into. We've recently worked with the yacht club members to resolve their concerns regarding parking on Shore Road and we reached an agreement in principle that resolves both the village's and the yacht club's concerns. Our respective attorneys are putting the finishing touches on our agreement. That being said, I intend to raise the board's concerns with the yacht club and to attempt to resolve what I, we, believe is an unlawful lease that takes fiscal advantage of village residents. I will provide more information and details as this matter proceeds. Fair?
I think so, but I wrote it.
Alright, I think the last thing I'll say on this is, which was an important point that council put in here. This, this deal was done in nineteen eighty-six and I was a sophomore at the military academy and the people at the yacht club right now that are in charge, were not in charge then, and the deal was struck in good faith, but we believe that this needs to be looked at and, um, that we need to be charging fair market value. I'll give two quick examples without giving the example, um, of a resident that has a residence on vill, on property that we own, that we struck a deal with for fair market value. And the Hudson Highland Nature Museum, cause it's a not-for-profit that pays rent to be on village property, even though they're a not-for-profit and are, you know, doing things, you know, they're, they're open to, to the community. So these are the considerations this board needs to undertake as we go forward, and I'll keep in a loop on it and the board will discuss this in greater length going forward. Alright, um, with that said up, Jim Kane pointed out that I did miss the topic of quit claims. So, um, we spoke about this at the work session and on advice of council, we have a small piece of property in the village. It's kind of an untenable piece of property, it's what's referred to in the real estate business as a remnant.
Well, we, we don't, as far as we know, we don't have it, meaning the village does not own it, as far as we know.
That's, that is very true, but it is essentially the front yard of a resident who lives amongst a lot of other neighbors whose front yards are in line with what this front yard should be. But because this piece of property, we've not been able to determine ownership of it, is that fair to say? The village would be required to maintain it, we, we don't, the property owner of the property behind it maintains it, but we, the village board seems to be amenable to conducting a quit claim with said resident if said residence pays the legal fees and the administrative fees and initiates the action, because it's a sliver of property that it's just, it's, it's out there as an island.
Yeah, maybe, let me just say this, it, it appears that this strip could have come from either a paper street at some point, or perhaps a road that has been discontinued, that, that area of the neighborhood has changed over the hundred plus years or so. When, when council reached out to me previously, based on the information we saw, the village didn't own it, we didn't come up in the title search that the village owned the property. Again, it's possible that at some point it was a village road. So essentially I, I explained to council that the village would consider, uh, quit claiming, meaning turning. meaning turning over any interest that we may have in this parcel, because there's nothing really evident or definitive from the title search, but we could be convinced to quit claim the property, any interest we may have in the property, to the property owner. So having said that, um, my suggestion is just simply to have the property owner retain council. Let council do the investigation that's appropriate, meaning a title search or something else. Provide the information to the village. I'll take a look at it, and if I find that everything's in order, the village can take action to quit claim or give away whatever interests, interests we may have. And I'm not even sure that the title search is gonna show we have any interest. So I'll review the documents and I'll advise the board, and you can take appropriate action at that time.
And the resident understands this and, and realizes that he or she needs to pursue this process if they are interested in pursuing the process. Okay. All right. So moving on to, for your information. Next zoning board meeting is scheduled for November ninth at seven PM in this very Edward C. Moulton Jr. boardroom. The next planning board meeting is scheduled for November fourteenth at seven PM in this very Edward C. Moulton Jr., um, boardroom. The Donahue Farm Halloween Movie Night Spectacular is gonna be held on October twenty-seventh. I think that's the Special Events Committee doing that, right? Maybe in concert with the Cornwall Youth Committee, but I think it's the Special Events Committee. Halloween is scheduled for October thirty-first of twenty twenty-three this year. General Election Day, as we previously passed in the resolution, is scheduled for November seventh, two thousand and twenty-three. Our polls here are open from six AM until nine PM, so everybody votes here. So everybody is supposed to. It's not a primary. This is the general election. It's not a village election. It's the November general election. So if you're normally vote here, this is where you vote. Veterans Day, village offices will be closed in November tenth in honor of that day of remembrance. And then the next work session of the village board, November thirteenth at seven PM in the work session room, which is at the front of village hall. And the next village board business meeting is scheduled for November twentieth at seven PM, and we'll be right back here in the same place. And with that said, um, sir?
Go back to the...
Counsel?
Question about, uh, tax exemption.
Okay.
If council has had an opportunity to research the statute.
And you may need to take some time tomorrow to do that, instead of trying to read it on your phone.
You don't think I can do it now?
All right, go ahead. What, what is your ta-, what is your advisement?
I could use a little time to look it up, but for tonight, but for tonight's purposes.
I would be happy for that.
But for, but for tonight's purposes. The text of the resolution should just be amended so that it does include the school district. I was able to check the statute, so, so the word "school district" should be included, you know, where appropriate in the resolution. The statute doesn't contain any timeframe itself as to when the exemption request has to be submitted. In my experience, they're usually done in the springtime, in March or April, uh, so that the assessor can finalize the assessment role before the end of July. It could be something in the town code. It could be a deadline from the town assessor. So, you know, I'd wanna verify that. If the board, i- I assumed our, this is in these minutes because we did this at the same time last year? All right. So, so let's, I would suggest to, to adopt the resolution. If for whatever reason we find that we can wait, the board can just tell us right now, we'll adopt the resolution. If we find it's not necessary, it doesn't have to be submitted to the town. But we don't, we just don't wanna miss the deadline. We just don't wanna miss any deadline.
What I'm saying, do we need to do it tonight, or is this something that could be put off ostensibly?
That I can't say because I don't know the deadline. That, that I can't say. And, and since we've done it apparently every year at this time...
Because what's the problem with passing it?
Right.
Because they're gonna decline it anyway.
They're petitioning them for...
What we're doing is risking blowing a deadline, which we don't know right now.
All right, all right. On that, all right, all right, all right, all right. You sold me on it. All right. Goes against, okay. All right. So, you know what? Why don't you propose a resolution? All right. Whereas the village of Cornwall and Hudson is the owner of real property...
Gonna get denied anyway.
...in town of Cornwall and town of New Windsor, county of Orange, identified in the tax map as follows. Section, section, block and lot. In the town of Cornwall, it is thirty-two, one seventeen, four-two, fifty-six, twenty-nine, one and fifty, twenty-nine, one and fifty-four, thirty-one, one and fifteen. And in the town of New Windsor, sixty-five, one and twenty. Whereas the above real property is devoted solely to public use, solely to public use, and part of the village-owned water system as the sites for water wells, plant treatment, chlorinator and watershed. And whereas the real property tax law, section four, six, subsection three, provides the authority for each taxing district in which the municipality-owned property used in such manners located to grant a whole exemption from real property taxes levied by that taxing district. And whereas such exemption for the village of Cornwall and Hudson Water Supply Site Real Property would provide a direct and immediate benefit for the taxpayers and water users of the village of Cornwall and Hudson, which would enhance real property ownership, encourage industrial and commercial development, and exemplify a spirit of intermunicipal cooperation between the county of Orange and this village. Now therefore be it resolved by the village board of the village of Cornwall and Hudson on behalf of the village of Cornwall and Hudson, its taxpayers, water system users and citizens, hereby petition the county of Orange, town of Cornwall and town of New Windsor to grant a whole...
And the school districts.
Cornwall Central.
And the Cornwall Central School District to grant a whole exemption from state, county and town real property taxes commencing for calendar year twenty twenty-four for the parcels of real property identified above and any additional properties as may be identified for which an exemption may be appropriate. And be it further resolved that the mayor and the attorney for the village are authorized to attend such meeting in the Orange County Legislature and committees thereof, as may be appropriate to aid and assist in the deliberations and this petition by that body. That sounds, that sounds interesting. All right. May I, uh, make this motion? Second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. So that is done. All right. Now we'll wait the denial. Okay. Lastly, um, well first, before board comments, we have last set of, uh, public comment. Anybody else from the public wish to address the board? Who have the opportunity to do so now? No? All right, just observing you two. All right. All right. Then moving on then to, uh, board comments, and I will start with the deputy mayor.
Motion to adjourn.
All right.
Just said, thanks to, to, uh, the DPW for, um, I know we had a bulk pickup last night, and you guys did a great job, so I appreciate that. Um, there's probably a few other things I'm missing, but, um, that's it for right now.
All right. Trustee Cornwright?
Condolences to the Yeomans, the Blains and the Fairs.
Tough week.
Yeoman's been on the property since nineteen nineteen. I talked to his son.
Wow.
Nineteen nineteen. And Mrs. Blaine was ninety-five, and she has a million relatives in this town. And Mr. Fair was only sixty-eight, and he passed away. Was a Cornwall graduate in nineteen seventy-three and lives in town, and, uh, just a great guy. It's very sad.
Thank you, Dave. Trustee Brain?
Uncharacteristically, I have no comments to make. I appreciate everybody's hard work in the departments and among the other board members. Thank you.
And trustee Paleyoda?
Still, still new to this part, trying to figure out exactly, um, what to say. I do have a question, though, actually. Um, in, in talking about the wires as they, um, hang all through the village, do we know what that big orange, I think it's orange, in front of the apartment building? Well, it's like, um, right across the street from Frank's Music, there's a, the apartment building right next to Cumberland.
Right.
On the left.
Coming down the pole and going into the ground?
No, it's huge. It's like coiled almost halfway, and it looks like it doesn't need to be there, but it's like... On the other side of the...
Yeah, it's gonna go in the ground.
They're built...
So that's gonna be continued?
That's gonna go in the ground.
They're built, yeah.
Cause I thought that was just another, another addition.
Those, those two buildings are gonna be connected.
Yeah.
So there's gonna be a building joining the two apartment buildings together.
Okay.
It'll go perpendicular to where the building's...
Orange and it's big like this?
Yes, yes.
That's called a telephone future.
A telephone future? All right, so you know. All right.
It's got a pull cable inside it.
Okay.
It's hollow.
Yeah. Any, any other alibis from trustees? Last thing I'd like to say is just please keep the people in the Middle East in your thoughts and prayers. Tough time there right now. Um, Israel had...
My son-in-law's there.
Yeah, and, that's right, trustee Cornwright's son-in-law is in, in the sandbox over in the Middle East right now. So just keep people there in your thoughts and prayers. All right. Absent any alibis, department heads? Counselor? Okay. Make a motion to adjourn. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That, that picture there has the, that's not even, that's not even a bad one. That's a, that's the wire picture.
Doris, Doris and Megan seem to think that that's...
Lee, it's horrible. I have to... Okay, so just, just so you know.
Or is that...
All right, just so you know, when you look at this, so you're a smart person...